Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, April 1st, 2024, and it is 6:30 PM. I would ask each of you to silence your cellphones, please, and please check to make sure that they are silenced. And I would ask that if anyone is audio or video recording this meeting, if they would let me know as the chair. Thank you. And your equipment should not interfere with the conducting of this meeting. I would ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have a proclamation tonight, and I'm going to ask Mr. Brown if he would please read it for me, and then we will hear from Mr. Jeremiah Pearson. Mr. Brown?
Proclamation in recognition of Arbor Day. Proclamation, whereas the town of Falmouth benefits from the graceful canopy of trees that shade us from the blazing summer sun, purify our air of contaminants, provide a peaceful respite from the ordinary world, and generally beautify our community. And whereas the town has been recognized by a national program, is known far and wide as a tree city. And whereas the Falmouth Tree Warden, Falmouth Garden Club, and Falmouth Public Schools recognize the aesthetic value of beautiful trees of Falmouth by organizing a day to celebrate the purity and strength exemplified by a statuesque tree and all living green things, thereby honor the trees of Falmouth by singing songs, sharing thoughts, and teaching more about the value of our trees. Now there are we four, Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Angelay Scott Price, and Robert P. Muscally, as the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, to hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, as Arbor Day. In witnessness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and caused a great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed this day, Monday, April 1st, 2024.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And just so everyone knows, we have Ms. Scott Price. She is here. She is in by phone. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call?
Zalinski, aye.
Scotty, aye.
Brown, aye.
The microphone's too loud.
Taylor, aye.
I haven't noticed it. I think they're okay.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Thank you. Good Pearson.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to briefly go over what we're doing for Arbor Day. This year, as I think you all well know, that we're creating Axis Park at Shiverick's Pond. Currently, this is a parcel of woods that's mostly all invasive species. We're going to be removing all the invasive species and planting all native species that have, you know, ecological benefits for the wildlife value and also for pollinators. Currently, 100 feet of it are in the wetland buffer. We're going to be replanting that with all mitigation plantings. And then to the west, we are putting in a pollinator garden, and then in the interior will just be all native species. So we're very excited about it. It's going to be a pretty big endeavor in a very large Arbor Day, and I hope all you can show up on the 26th.
Awesome. Any questions or comments from the board?
Happy to see this moving forward. We've talked about it for a while.
For quite a while.
Yeah, it's been a long time coming.
Yeah, it's good that we're ready to get to it.
It's awesome. Thank you so much.
And just briefly, quickly, on May 10th as well, we're going to be hosting the school department. We're bringing down Professor Elwood Pricklethorn. He comes to the schools and talks about the benefits of trees. That'll be on May 10th at T-Ticket Eastbound School.
And what are the times for these, the 26th?
This is April 26th, and the other one will be May 10th.
Do you have date, time for the?
May 10th one? Or both? For this? I do, actually. I have actually an agenda right here.
Excellent.
Thanks. And I believe the schools will be around 10 o'clock, 10:30, but I can, you can email me, and I can send you all that.
10:00 AM. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Any recognitions from the board? Announcements from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Mr. Muscally, go ahead.
Thank you. This Saturday, April 6th, at 10:00 AM, there will be a meeting at the Gus Candy Community Center for input on the Falmouth Skate Park, for those who are interested in that project. There will also be a job fair at Gus Candy this Saturday from 12 to 3 for people who are interested in recreation, summer camp staff, beach staff, DPW, and more. There are a number of other items that are posted on the website of the Recreation Department that people should look at, Summer Adventure Program, Touch a Truck, Sunday, April 21st, and Whiffle, T-Ball, and Junior Baseball, all of which are available.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Mr. Brown?
No, nothing.
Mr. Zalinski? You're good? Okay, we'll move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on this agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. And I'm going to ask that we keep the talking low, please, because it's really disruptive when people are talking and someone's at the podium. Anyone here for public comment? Okay. We are early, so I think we're going to take a couple of things out of order, Mr. Renshaw. We're early for the hearings. Why don't we do Business Number Eight, the 2024 Seasonal and Spring Renewals, License Renewals?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll keep this one short. If you want to talk slowly, we'll try to. So posted in tonight's agenda is a copy of the businesses which are up for renewal of their annual licenses. It's my recommendation, Madam Chair, that the board approve the renewal of the licenses as posted in tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any question on the license renewals? And are you looking for a vote?
Yes, I am.
To renew them.
I would move approval of the licenses as listed. Do we need to read them off?
We do not.
No.
We can say that they're as posted.
Okay. I've moved that we approve these licenses as posted.
Second, Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the license renewals of 2024 Seasonal and Spring Annual. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Scotty, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Thank you.
Business Seven, Madam Chair. Can I recommend we do so?
It passes unanimously. Certainly. Go right ahead.
Okay, Business Item Number Seven. Just as a bit of background and summary, the Finance Committee has recommended approval of a roof replacement project for the North Falmouth Elementary School under Article 21 of the April Annual Town Meeting. The funding for this project, per the Finance Committee recommendation, is going to be contingent on approval of a Prop. 2.5 debt exemption ballot question at the town election, which the date is May 21st this year. The town clerk has advised that the election ballot must be finalized no later than April 16th. The Select Board routinely votes to place debt exemption ballot questions on the election ballot prior to the town meeting vote. This allows for the votes to take place at a regular televised Select Board meeting. Madam Chair and Select Board, in the event town meeting does not vote to approve Article 21 by the requisite two-thirds majority, the board can vote to rescind the ballot question from the ballot at a meeting on April 9th or April 10th. We're planning to post Select Board meetings for April 9th and 10th as a contingency plan just for this purpose. Madam Chair and Select Board, I'm recommending the Select Board vote to place the following debt exemption question on the election ballot. The wording for this ballot question has been approved by bond counsel for compliance with applicable state law and bond financing requirements. And I'll read that really quickly for the record. Shall the Town of Falmouth be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and One Half, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay the cost of engineering, design and replacement of the North Falmouth Elementary School roof, and to include gutters, drainage areas, and catch basins, fascia, repairs to front entranceway and canopy, masonry work, exterior painting, and loading dock driveway reconfiguration to allow for better drainage, interior damage from leaks, including but not limited to floors, ceiling tiles, wall repairs, painting and insulation replacement? The project's scope also includes architectural, engineering, and HVAC, evaluation of costs for future addition of air conditioning, and possible addition of solar energy panels, including, without limitation, all costs that are incidental and related thereto. Madam Chair, the recommended motion this evening for this item is I move the Select Board vote to place the Proposition 2.5 debt exemption question for the North Falmouth Elementary School roof as presented on the election ballot of May 21st, 2024.
Madam Chair, I'll move the recommended motion as described by the town manager.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Scotty, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I can probably get through Number Six, Madam Chair. About five minutes if you...
Okay, let's go with the consider and vote fiscal policy, and then we should be able to go right into the hearing.
All right, so as you all know, we recently completed our 10-year fiscal 2023 capital plan. Upon reviewing the plan, the plan total has risen from the fiscal 2022 capital plan estimate of about $248.5 million to the fiscal year 2023 plan total of $524,243,784. Madam Chair and Select Board, the new total includes all projects submitted by all departments, whether anticipated to be funded from borrowing, free cash, grants, or other sources. We feel that this is more comprehensive, kind of transparent picture of the capital planning over the next 10 years, including all those sources. The updated number does not include, importantly, amounts for a number of capital needs which have yet to be quantified, and those, as you know, include the new police station, a full review of coastal infrastructure needs, and a comprehensive building assessment improvement study. With the revealing of a more complete capital plan, with the exceptions noted above, funding many high-priority projects will not fit into the town's debt drop-off approach. In other words, funding the capital plan based on current estimates will require tax increases. The proposed change to the fiscal policy will increase the upper limit of the balance held in our capital stabilization fund by amending Section 7E of the fiscal policy. And you have a copy of that fiscal policy in your packets.
And that's the only piece that you're amending, am I correct?
That is the only section.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Muscally?
So it's either 3 million or up to 10%? It's a...
It's the range. So it'll be a minimum of $3 million, then capital stabilization to 10%.
The way it reads, I think, was a little stilted. I think maybe right before 3 million. You might want to consider so that it would read the town will maintain a balance of the greater of 3 million? No? Okay?
No, if I may, that's not the intent.
Okay.
So the intent is to adopt a range. So the minimum of the range is 3 million, and the maximum of the range is 10% of the total estimated cost of projects. So if that's not clear, we can revise it to make it...
Maybe say a range of, then, if that's the intent. I just think the way it's worded, I think it could be better worded if that's what it says, a range of between 3% and 10%.
3 million and 10%.
3 million and 10%.
Yep.
Or something along those lines.
Okay.
So what would that look like?
Yeah, so let me take a shot at that on the fly. The town will maintain a minimum balance of 3 million and a maximum balance of 10% of the total estimated cost of projects listed in the 10-year capital plan.
Thank you.
I like that as well. I like calling out the minimum. I think that's really important.
So we'll amend that proposed, town will obtain a minimum balance of 3 million to a maximum balance of 10%.
Great, and that's the...
Have amended I'd move adoption of the policy. Are we looking for a vote?
We do have to vote.
I would like to vote.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the amended 7E of this fiscal policy. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Scotty, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. All right, is there anything you can do in one minute or two minutes?
Madam Chair, I don't believe there is.
Okay. My phone says 6:45, so I'm going to move forward with the hearing.
Do we have an interview?
Oh, yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Muscally. We have two interviews, actually. First...
Luke is sick, I think.
But the other young lady's here. So we have the first one, the Affordable Housing Committee, David Sukawi. If you would step up to the podium, please. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Sir, we do have your application. Is there anything that is not on the application that you would like the board to know about you?
No, I can't think of... Little less pleasing than speaking about myself, so I will...
Okay.
...out the fur and respond to any questions you might have.
I thought it was interesting that you were the Commissioner of the County Department of Social Services in Syracuse, New York.
Uh-huh, yes.
That was an interesting tidbit in your background. Any questions from the board?
Some rather cold winters out in Onondaga County.
Say again?
Some cold winters out in Onondaga County.
A few, a few.
I would say his background seems strong in this regard, and I would recommend appointment for, what's the term?
It should be in your...
Unexpired, sir.
Unexpired term until June 30th, 2024.
That's my motion. I would move appointment until June 2024.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Scotty, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Great, thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our second interview is for the Cultural Council, and one of our people called in sick, and so we rescheduled him for April 22nd. And we have Rema Petrosian, Petrosian?
Yes.
I wanted to get that right. Welcome. Is there anything you would like to tell us about yourself that isn't on your resume?
Well, it is, but I'm a daughter of two Armenian immigrants, and I understand the importance of culture in everyone's lives, and as an artist myself, I really want to bring my perspective to the Cultural Council.
Wow, that's awesome. Any questions of the applicant from the board?
Should be a great addition. I'll move the appointment for a term, an expired term of June 30th, 2024.
Excellent. I'll second it.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Scotty, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Scott Price, aye.
Whoops. Okay, now we will move into our public hearings. Our first application for an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license and annual entertainment license, and a Sunday entertainment license for Ten Water Street LLC Doing Business as Pie in the Sky. Ten Water Street Woods Hole. Mr. Zalinski for the notice, please.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Ten Water Street LLC Doing Business as Pie in the Sky Coffee and Bakery has applied for an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license. Applications have also been made under Chapter 140, 183 Alpha as amended, and Chapter 136 of the General Laws for an annual entertainment license and an annual Sunday entertainment license to be exercised at Ten Water Street Woods Hole, Mass. Hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, April 1st, 2024, at 6:45 PM. Comments may be sent to the Select Board at falmouthma.gov. Por order of the Select Board, Nancy Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski, Douglas Brown, Angelay Scott Price, Robert P. Muscally.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski.
Madam Chair, before we begin, I'd just like to say that I've worked with Mr. Gura in the past on residential remodeling project of his house, but that was several years ago, and we don't have any current business, and I think I can be impartial and sit on this here.
Great, thank you for the notice. Okay, and you are the applicant, correct?
I am actually Anthony Sokolos, for the record. I'm an attorney at Amenclower LLP, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, thank you.
Ten Water Street LLC, which is the owner of Pie in the Sky Coffee and Bakery located at Ten Water Street in Woods Hole, and they're seeking a new on-premises liquor license, as well as an annual regular entertainment license and an annual Sunday entertainment license as well. With me tonight is Eric Gura, who is the general manager of Pie in the Sky. Eric bought pie back in 2002, and he's owned the business from that time until around May 2018, when he sold it to the applicant's parent company, BT Brands Incorporated, which is a publicly traded company listed on the NASDAQ Stock Exchange. The applicant was created to be the entity that holds the business Pie in the Sky. After the sale to BT Brands, Eric remained in charge of the business, so he's there on a day-to-day basis, and he oversees management, he oversees staff, and the training of the staff. Eric is also the LLC manager of Martha Ertman LLC, which owns the land and the building at Ten Water Street, so he's effectively Pie in the Sky's landlord. Pie is a very successful local business that has a very long track record of success in Woods Hole. It's continuously been operating for over 40 years. Eric himself has been running the business for well over 20 years, though he doesn't own it anymore, as previously noted. Pie has indoor and outdoor seating. There are 13 seats located indoors. There is another 54 seats located outdoors in the outdoor patio. No customers are permitted to access the rooftop or the basement areas. They'll only be allowed to access the first floor and the outdoor patio seating area. Regarding the outdoor space, Pie plans to rope off the patio in front and in the rear portion of the building, so the people will not be able to easily just walk off the premises with alcohol in hand, which is, actually enhances the safety of the place as it is right now. People are invited to come to the restaurant to open mic night, BYOB, that's per Falmouth regulations. So we really think that it would be a safer set of affairs if they're granted a liquor license and are allowed to rope off the area. The northern side of the building already is covered by a four-foot-tall wooden picket fence.
Can I hang on one second?
Yeah.
Could I have some clarification around BYOB?
Consumed on the process.
Hold on, I need to hear from, I'm asking our management, please.
So Madam Chair, Peter and I had a discussion earlier this afternoon. It's our understanding, and we had a brief discussion, all that Peter kind of filled in some of the details with town council. The town currently has no policy, formal policy, with regards to BYOB.
That was my question, that I'm not aware of a BYOB policy. Okay, thank you.
The northern side of the building is already covered by a four-foot-tall white picket fence, which stretches from the sign all the way to the back choke point, which is where customers can enter the premises. There's a gate that's five feet tall that'll remain closed at all times. The building commissioner, Gary Street, has reviewed the floor plan here on three separate occasions. He's approved it every single time. Most recently, we added the roping along the front and the rear portion that goes from the stair in the back all the way to where that white picket fence starts in the back of the building. There would be only a couple of gaps opening in the roping so that people could actually enter the premises, and they will be staffed. There will be personnel at each of those openings, and there'll also be a sign placed there saying, "No alcohol allowed beyond this point." A large portion of Pie's customers come from the ferry traffic, with the Steamship Authority located in very close proximity to Ten Water Street. In the summer months, people are walking around the area nearly 24 hours a day. Pie is presently open from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, sort of mainly coffee, pastries, sandwiches, but soon they're going to be offering dinner service, and serving liquor will enhance the dinner service and add a new revenue stream to the business. In addition to seeking the new liquor license, Pie is seeking an annual entertainment license and an annual Sunday entertainment license, which would enhance the atmosphere at the restaurant by allowing Pie to feature local musicians who play to patrons in the afternoons and evenings. It's noteworthy for me to mention that Pie had entertainment licenses before the pandemic for about 15 years. There was never really any issue. I'm sure that a few people in town may have complained about that in the past, but they did it successfully for the entire time. And the only reason that the entertainment licenses lapsed was, you know, due to the pandemic. They really didn't know when people would start coming out and about again, and we're here to rectify that now. Now that the pandemic's over, offering entertainment and alcohol to patrons will help this local business stay afloat. It'll help breathe new life into the downtown area of Woods Hole, and will provide residents and visitors with another option to get out of their houses and hotel rooms, as it were, and enjoy a meal and a beverage, and have funded an outstanding local establishment with a very long and well-established track record of success in Woods Hole and Falmouth in general. And we understand that some members of the community have reached out to the town with various arguments and opposition to the grant of these licenses, and I would like the board to know that it's our position that this is a restaurant that is attempting to survive and thrive in a post-pandemic era. A few comments I read stated something to the effect that expanded dinner service, extended hours of operation, year-round entertainment, and alcohol service is a lot to ask in one series of applications all at one time, and we don't think that Pie is asking for anything out of the ordinary, and most restaurateurs on Cape Cod would agree that offering liquor and entertainment to customers is a necessity. I understand that not everybody feels that way, but I think the overwhelming majority of restaurateurs that, you know, have been existing for a long time on the Cape would agree that alcohol sales really do aid the local business revenue. Eric Gura is the person in charge on a day-to-day basis, though he no longer owns the business, as previously mentioned. He is the landlord of the business. He has a vested interest in this business's success. He's been tasked by the owners with continuing oversight, and he's operated the business continuously for over two decades. He rightfully enjoys an overwhelmingly positive reputation in Woods Hole and broader Falmouth. The outdoor areas will be roped off in such a way that, if anything, less people will be wandering around, and patrons of the restaurant will be confined to the premises when consuming food or beverages. As previously mentioned, Pie had an entertainment license for several years, approximately 15 years prior to the onset of the pandemic when it expired. And in terms of the entertainment being offered, it will typically be a solo guitarist. On occasion, bands will be invited to play, but we do not envision this turning into the Xfinity Center in Mansfield or a concert venue amphitheater scenario. This is a local business that's a coffee shop that wants to expand its menu to offer dinner service. It wants to offer alcohol to patrons, and it would like to have entertainment on occasion being played. And Pie envisions that the alcohol service and entertainment will likely wrap up most nights, probably around 10:00 PM, although we're asking for permission to operate until 1:00 in the morning.
Folks, let him present the case, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And beyond that, everything else is basically a set forth in the application, and we're happy to take any questions from the board and the public at this time.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Sure.
So when was your last valid entertainment license? What year was that?
I believe the last valid entertainment license was in 2020.
And since that time, you've provided entertainment without a license, am I correct?
I don't believe that's the case.
You haven't had the open mic night, and you haven't had people in?
We tried to get the open mic night up and running, and it was spotty because of the pandemic. We had a license the year the pandemic struck, and then, as you know, everything just disappeared. And the two years following, last summer was the first summer we really started to see that it was going to be something that could be viable again, and we had a lot of people asking about it. And so this year, we wanted to come and get right back where we were pre-pandemic.
But I think you did have it, and, because I've seen some pictures of it, but I don't think you had a valid license to have entertainment. So that was my first question. My second question is, as I just did a little research on the people who now own Pie in the Sky, it talks about, owned by BT Brands?
Yes, BT Brands is a-
Okay, I'm going to finish my question, okay? And that they own a fast food chain called Burger Time, located in North and South Dakota, Minnesota, and Woods Hole. And so I was sort of want, that's exactly what it says.
That's a typo.
And, and another subsidiary is that it's a fast food restaurant chain called Burger Time. So I was just curious if there's a plan at some point that, that maybe Pie in the Sky would morph into something other than it is. I didn't know if that was part of the business plan moving forward.
I don't believe that's part of the business plan whatsoever. Burger Time is a North Dakota, South Dakota, and regional Minnesota operation. I believe there's 10 of them in total. I don't think there's any intent to expand this to Woods Hole.
And then they, they talked about in January, 26, 2024, a proposed name change to allow, to align the name with their new business strategy. So when you read that, I just started to wonder what the long-term business plan was.
Now, if I may, Madam Chair, I think that Pie in the Sky is a, is a very, very, it's a fixture in the Woods Hole community, and I don't think there's any intent to change that.
I, I understand that. I'm well aware of Pie in the Sky.
Sure.
Any questions from the board, comments?
I'll wait. You're describing in your testimony that, that you went without a, a business license because of the strains of COVID. Are you aware of any of the other businesses that operated in a similar fashion to you that did the same, or did they maintain their licenses?
No, I'm rarely not generally aware of what other businesses did. I know a lot of businesses closed during the pandemic due to the, you know, hard time that everybody had, due to all the lockdowns that we experienced. So, you know, at the time, Pie in the Sky felt that there wasn't people coming out and about, and there was no sense in holding the license, because we really didn't, well, they didn't really know when things would resume back to normal. And now that it's in the rearview, I think that they're ready to, you know, seek those entertainment licenses again.
And I'd like to revisit your statement about the BYOB. What is your interpretation of what you're allowed to do there because we don't have a, a policy?
Yeah, my, my-
Did you explain what you had said before?
Yeah, my understanding is that that was, there was nothing that precluded the business from, from doing that, and I don't believe that's the case.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Another question I had is that you're looking for live entertainment consistent-
Madam Chair, could we, could we elaborate on that last question just a little bit?
Oh, sure. I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Well, I'm sorry. The open mic night has been going on at Pie for 42 years, and for the 20 years prior to I owned the business, we didn't have any license for it. And for the first, probably five or six years that I operated, 2002 to 2007, we didn't have a license. We finally realized it'd probably be the right thing to do, but it's always been an informal thing, basically involving high school and college age kids, a lot of bands that now perform on the Cape got their start as 13, 14, 15-year-olds. So it's always been sort of an organic, not really formal thing. And we did it at last during, during COVID. I actually asked if I could get my license extended or, you know, as a grace to move forward, because we didn't use it that entire year, but they said, "No, you just have to wait." I said, "Well, if there's no one coming out, we'll wait till the situation looks like we'll be able to do it successfully again, then we get, we apply and get our license back."
Thank you. So in that entertainment license, you're asking for solo guitarist or band with amplified vocals and instruments? And one of the things that this board has talked about a lot is how do we keep the music and the noise within the proximity of the business?
Property lines.
And the property lines. And so how would you intend to do that? The amplification is concerning to me as well as a band.
Well, as I mentioned before, I think most, most of the time, and I mean the overwhelming majority of the time, we're talking about a solo guitarist that is playing what it would be an acoustic guitar that has electrification ability to plug into an amp, but playing acoustically through an amp essentially. And that, that's essentially what we're envisioning. Having said that, Pie has been a launching spot for local bands, and on occasion, they would like to be able to have a band play. We understand that there's other businesses within the area and within the vicinity that have outdoor entertainment and have bands playing there. So if other, you know, restaurants are doing that as well, I don't see why Pie wouldn't be able to do it in a way that, you know, the town would appreciate and which would be respectful to the community as well.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So I believe that the other restaurants you're referring to probably have their entertainment indoors, is that not correct?
Um, I don't think that's correct. No, I believe that there's at least one other bar in town that has outdoor entertainment that's amplified.
Okay.
On a regular basis.
We had a lot of correspondences, I, I see you've got the pile there as well.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of folks were commenting from Buzzards Bay Avenue and so forth, that the sound does travel quite far from the property. And so there's, a lot of concern has been raised by the neighborhood, and I'm wondering how that's going to translate to this new entertainment license.
Sure, sure. My understanding is that there's not that much residential dwellings in the immediate vicinity of the area. Now, that's not to say that there's none, but I think that, that what's, what's contemplated is essentially acoustic guitar playing through an amplifier with an occasional band coming through. This business is very, very mindful of the local community. It's been a fixture for over 40 years now. They do not want to alienate the public, they do not want to upset the public, they want to do things in a respectful way. They're very mindful of all of these things. Did you have anything to add on?
Excuse me, I live one street over from Buzzards Bay, so, you know, if the wind's blowing in the right direction, you can hear the announcements on the Steamship Terminal clear as you guys are here tonight. I do intend to keep this the way that we have traditionally in the past. Should be an asset to the community, a place for kids to go and people to enjoy music. And anytime we've had a complaint, it's very easy for me to either physically go there and shut it down, or simply call and be like, "Too loud, get rid of it, we're done for tonight." And that's how we've always dealt with any complaints in the past.
In your presentation, thank you, in your presentation, you said that people wouldn't be able to easily take alcohol off the premises. What, what, what steps will you take to ensure that that's not going to happen? I mean, we know people congregate across the street regularly. We, we know that that's a really tight area, cars coming around the bend, going down to, to the terminal and the landfall and all those other establishments. What, what efforts? I heard you say you were going to have a staff person there, but I mean, what kind of training, what kind of efforts are you going to be put in to make sure that this doesn't happen?
Sure, thank you for your question, sir. I think that the word easily leaving the premises was, was maybe a, a mischaracterization. I'd like to re-characterize that, is, is not possible to leave the area with drinks in hand. That is the exact scenario that Pie in the Sky wants to avoid. As I mentioned, there is a lot of roping around the patio, they will be staffed at the entrances on both sides. Pie also intends to employ bouncers when alcohol is being served as well, that are trained. Eric is himself tip-certified, his staff will be tip-certified, everyone serving alcohol will be as well. So this business is going to be very, very cognizant of the risks that are presented, and is going to do everything in their power to mitigate those risks, frankly.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So typically, when we have beer and wine licenses, kind of like for a lunch place, and then liquor is more for like a full-seated restaurant, is the menu changing to?
A little bit. We're going to add a couple of items, lobster salad and popover, grilled smash burger. We've had a bunch of customers, we've already tried a couple of these as specials, and people have said, "Boy, it'd be nice to get a cold beer with this." We heard enough of that, so it sort of got everybody's wheels turning. We do intend to employ bouncers, especially if there's live music going on. A couple of the staff have military training, and I'm hoping to recruit them actually to be the bouncers. So we feel like we've got a pretty good plan and place to handle this.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Zelinski, and then I'll go back to Mr. Muscally.
Don't you, the terminology you're using with military bouncers and all that makes this sound a little less ancillary than it was initially proposed.
No, these, these personalities he's mentioning just happen to have military training. We're not going to be bringing in people from the base-
I understand that, but it's sounding more and more to me like a bar than it is a restaurant that serves alcohol.
No, I mean, it would be, it would be a restaurant that has an all-alcohol license like any bar, just, there's not going to be a bar per se, it's going to be counter-service. That's what it is. So they're expanding the restaurant, they're, they're expanding the theme from a, what is now a coffee shop and bakery, to a, a restaurant that offers dinner service as well.
By adding, how many food menu items? Three, you said?
Three or four, occasional rotating specials as well.
To start.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Muscally?
Two questions, and they are, would you consider questions? Number one, would you consider doing away with alcohol and just having beer and wine? That's one question. The other is, would you consider less than 1:00, 1:00 AM in the morning, consistent with, you know, the residential neighborhood that would, I wouldn't say residential, but the close community that Woods Hole is into, something like 9:00 o'clock on, during the week, 10:00 o'clock on weekends, something along those lines?
Yes, I would say that we would consider both items. The fact of the matter is, is that for Cape restaurants, a liquor license is a lifeline, and, you know, Pie has struggled through the pandemic. They're, they're still doing well, don't get me wrong, but they, they want to enhance their revenue stream to the greatest extent possible, and they feel that a full liquor license is appropriate. Having said that, I think they would consider beer and wine, and they, it goes hand-in-hand with considering reducing the hours of operation to, to keep them essentially what they are. Really, they, if, if they were going to reduce it from 1:00 AM, they, they prefer to, you know, formally reduce that to maybe midnight or 11:00 PM if possible. But I wouldn't say that anything's off the table. They, they're very comfortable staying open till 10:00 PM, if that's what, all that the town will allow. But we thought that it made sense for them, like every other restaurant that serves liquor, to be able to serve till 1:00 AM.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one more, is, what about parking? I know it's a nightmare in, in Woods Hole, and this is probably, if it's going to increase revenue, it's going to increase traffic and customer base numbers.
Most of our clients are from the Steamship, and it's zone B1, so the parking, I don't see be any more troublesome than it already is going to be.
And hand in, hand in hand with that, there's not going to be any additional seating that's being proposed, or any, you know, expansion of the, the premises right now, so we don't think that there's any requirement for additional parking. I've learned from the owners that about 80 to 85% of the business that comes through is traffic from the Steamship Authority, so most of it's going to be foot traffic anyways.
Okay.
Mr. Muscally?
Just, Mr. Gura, had you reached out to the community about your plans, or is this the first time the community's actually hearing about this?
We haven't really made a whole big, big deal out of it. We're just trying to see if we can get this to happen. We don't really expect it to do a whole lot to the day-to-day operations.
Any other questions from the board before I open it up to the public? Public comment on this application? Yes, sir. You need to come up to the podium.
Okay.
Yep. And could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Alan Steinbach. I live in Woods Hole, I'm a licensed physician in the state of Massachusetts. I take care of a lot of kids. Frankly, Eric Gura raised my kids. On Monday nights, his idea, his idea to have an open mic was something that we hadn't acted on otherwise in the town, and it was remarkably successful. If you don't know the area, there's a natural amphitheater along across from Pie in the Sky, and that's almost entirely jammed with non-drinking people. I think my concern, aside from saying that Woods Hole needs another liquor license like it needs a bicycle for a fish, is to basically say that our, our total hope is that Eric and the owners of Pie in the Sky are able to maintain it, are able to prosper. If it requires ropes around it, there'd be ropes around it. If the entertainment license is needed for the type of entertainment they've been doing, I would very much support an entertainment license. But as a parent, and now a grandparent, I am adamantly against adding more liquor license of any sort, beer, wine, or liquor, into Woods Hole, particularly in a venue which is known for, and very, very friendly for, non-drinking underage people. And I haven't heard a persuasive argument, aside from showing the actual profit and loss statements, which we don't have a right for, saying why it would be an improvement for the town of Woods Hole to add a liquor license, beer, wine, or liquor, to this particular location, on the assumption that that's going to be needed in order for it to be successful. I think it'll be successful, because if it keeps on doing what it's doing, which is being a great place for people to come by bicycles, a lot of bicycle trips end in Pie in the Sky, and for kids to come on Monday night and hear open mic, and I completely support Eric's support and the fact that he probably did help create many of the local bands. So there's no criticism of that whatsoever, and frankly, it's not a criticism of the representatives of the owners. I can understand why they would like to make more money, but not with alcohol, not at Pie in the Sky. I'd oppose it completely. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else for public comment? Ms. Bumpus?
Hi, I'm Catherine Bumpus. I'm co-president of the Woods Hole Community Association. I submitted some comments to you. I will thank you all for getting me back to reading some things that I haven't read in a long time, which are the Town of Falmouth Alcoholic Beverage Regulations, which start out with a very interesting piece in the preamble that says, "The number of licenses for on-premise consumption is not governed by quotas. There is no compelling reason for the Board of Selectmen to issue licenses if the, if in the opinion of the Board, the public need and the public good will not be served." We certainly have enough liquor licenses in Woods Hole. There are eight or nine other places where you can go buy a drink. There is no place else that really is open in the evening that you can't buy a drink, that somebody who didn't want to be consuming alcohol, or be faced with others who are consuming alcohol, would be able to go. I will say that a very rosy picture of open mic has been presented, a very rosy picture of the entertainment that has happened over the past years. It has been a sticking point for the village, it has been a place that some people enjoy, that some people feel is very overwhelming. There are times when there are huge numbers of youth who don't behave as well as we would like. They are noisy, some nights it goes very late, you have to text Eric, or it doesn't get shut down on time. Some of us get up and go to work in the morning, though not, not everybody's on vacation in Woods Hole all the time. So it's tough to have it, to hear it at 10:00 at night in the kitchen. I'd prefer not to. I'd like it to be quiet. The past number of years, they are, they have been having entertainment and without a license, so it's hard to say that they are willing to comply with license regulations that are put in front of them. Clearly, he understood the need for a license for a period of time and chose not to come back and renew it for whatever reasons. I don't know what those are. Having alcohol in that small outdoor space with a piece of line up to keep people from walking past it doesn't seem like enough control. This is counter-service, this is not table service. The outdoor restaurants in Falmouth generally, if you're out on the sidewalk at Anheuser, there is somebody bringing you your drink, and they will probably notice if you walk away with your drink. Here, most things are served in a to-go cup, most of the service is to-go. I don't know how you prevent people from walking out except for with a lot of staff and a lot of bouncers, and that doesn't seem particularly welcoming. There's also not a lot of room on that patio, and if you take space and put a band or a concert, or even just somebody playing guitar there, you're taking away seating space. There's no way to keep it within the property. You are basically licensing entertainment off the property, and I don't think that's something that this board has really been comfortable with in the past. So I outlined some requests for an earlier stop time, no alcohol, and I hope that you'll consider that.
Thank you. Anyone else, before I close this hearing? Yes, ma'am? Did you? Ma'am, did you want to come up?
Yes, I'm going.
And then, Mr. Parrish, I'll take you next, and then, do I have someone over here that would like to speak? Okay.
Thank you. My name is Joan Glazberg, and I'm a former teacher, and in this world we live in, community- And in this world we live in, community is something that we have lost in many places. Community in Woods Hole, in Falmouth, is something that people are attracted to when they decide to come and live here. And my question is, what interest does BT Brands have in our community? What do they know about our community? Why would they care about our community? They're on the stock exchange. So, my question is, would we want to provide something in our community that is owned by a stock exchange BT brand company from North Dakota? What is their interest in our community?
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, you're up, and then I will, there's someone over here that would like to speak.
Can you focus on pictures?
Okay. And we know you, but please introduce yourself, okay?
I sent this all to your email today, but it's why I just got back into town and heard about this.
Oh, okay.
So I wanted to just bring pictures about what I'm going to speak about.
Okay. Okay.
Hi, all. My name's Branch Parrish. I'm the owner of the Woods Hole Market at 87 Water Street in Woods Hole. And I want to preface what I'm going to say by, I'm not against business in any way, shape or form. I'm all for good business. My, my big problem is really, well, there's a couple of them, but anyway. I think before you issue a license for all alcohol pouring license, there's some things that need to be addressed. And one of the main things is loading zone. There is no loading zone at all around Pi in the Sky. It's a huge problem. I personally go to the bank every morning or every other day, and probably 80% of the time, there's a truck there that blocks the entrance to be able to park in back of the bank. Many times I've come out of the bank and had the trucks with their ramps extended all the way, and I have to wait 10, 15, sometimes 20 minutes. Sometimes they're nice enough, they'll pack it up, and they, they, they put it back in, move the truck, and let me out. So I, I think that's a huge problem right off the bat. I don't think it's fair that this problem lands on the backs of the community and the, and the businesses in the village. Parking's always, like I said, parking's always being blocked, and so, so that's one of my biggest concerns, is the fact that there is no loading zone. I've talked to Eric about it in the past, and it just kind of falls on deaf ears. And I just don't understand why his delivery trucks can't park down by the Lee, uh, the Lee side now it is, again. That's the closest loading zone, I believe. And then the next closest loading zone would be down on, on Luskam, I guess, in front of the old Jimmy's and the liquor store. And, but the drivers don't seem to want to, you know, hump it up the hill or whatever, or they'll park in front, or as one of those pictures you'll see, a lot of times they park on the bridge, taking a right to go into the steamship, coming up, coming up railroad. They'll park on the right-hand side and kind of block traffic there for, you know, half hour, 45 minutes at a time sometimes. I just don't think that's fair. I have a loading zone in front of my store, 127 feet. I don't think that's fair either, but that's a whole nother issue. But I don't have trucks unloading all over the place. So, that's one of my biggest pet peeves with this whole, this whole thing. As a matter of fact, I was gonna come to the Selectmen about this issue, and I just got back into town about a week and a half ago, and I just found out about this liquor license hearing on Friday. So I haven't really had a lot of time to, to figure things out. But anyway, that's one of my biggest concerns. I just thought that this was a time to present it, because he is going for an all-alcoholic liquor license. It's going to be a lot more traffic, a lot more deliveries, and, like I said, I think the loading zone issue needs to be addressed as far as that goes. As far as the liquor license is going, I've, I've, I've been the holder of liquor licenses, package store, and restaurant licenses in the town of Falmouth. And the questions I've always been asked by the board, anytime I come for liquor licenses, where's the liquor going to be stored? Is there going to be a bar, which we just found out there isn't going to be a bar? A lot of the staff at Pi in the Sky is very young, 14, 15, 16, 17 years old. What, the biggest thing is, again, where's the liquor being stored? Is it going to be stored in the basement, you know, in the walk-ins where staff is down there working, underage people and older people? So those are some of the, the questions I have as far as that goes. And, but again, my biggest problem is not about business per se, but it's the loading zone, because it's, it's really a huge problem down there, and I think it really needs to be addressed as a whole, to be honest with you. And that's, that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, I can't see you. It's your turn.
Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate you dedicating your evening to this. My name is James Anthony. I'm the president and CEO of Martha's Vineyard Bank. The bank that we refer to is Martha's Vineyard Bank, and you can see it on the drawings that were provided. There's a, a marking here that says "Wall of Bank." So the bank's building is directly adjacent to Pi in the Sky, and that, or the bank's property projects behind, the parking lot behind Pi in the Sky is owned by Martha's Vineyard Bank as well. I would corroborate Mr. Parrish's remarks in terms of loading area. It definitely directly impacts our parking. It is an ongoing, it was a very contentious issue, and it's, it's less so now, and we appreciate that a bit more constructive. But it is an ongoing issue, whether it's from delivery trucks, or also Pi in the Sky employees or customers, is a continuing problem of parking in the parking lot as if it's, as if it's a part of Pi in the Sky, which creates significant issues for our employees, given that there's only a limited number of spots. They pull in the morning, and either there's a delivery truck blocking them, or they come to try and catch the ferry, maybe to go across to the island or back, or in this building, and someone's parking in all the spaces, and they only recognize half the cars. It's a significant annoyance for, for our employees and our customers as well, trying to use the bank, as Mr. Parrish indicated. Secondly, a specific point on entertainment. So the, what's marked as an entertainment location in the magenta arrow that shows on the drawing in the color copy is, directly to the left of that is the wall of the bank. So on the other side of that drywall are bank employees trying to conduct bank business. So you have a six-inch wall separating them from the, from the entertainment that's there. And so, a specific request to that would be, there was a request about the ending time of the entertainment, but the starting time of the entertainment to be limited to, limited to 5:00 p.m. on weekdays, on weekends, in the afternoon. The bank building is, is not utilized by customers, so it wouldn't be impactful on Saturday afternoon and Sunday, but during the week before 5:00, it would have a direct and material impact on the operations of the bank. Access to the parking lot, as I say, the, the relationship with the, the bank relative to the parking lot has been problematic over the years. And I'd make that, this comment very specific to the parking. On the right-hand diagram, upper right corner, that, I don't know about everyone else, but most of the establishments that serve alcohol that I've been to, it's that dark corner where people can get around the corner, there's, is where all the shenanigans happen. In this case, that corner, upper right corner, is the access to the bank's parking lot. So I can imagine, and it's also relatively low-traveled going back along the building there. So I think if anything's going to happen, any kind of shenanigans, it's going to happen in the parking lot, around the corner, through that space. So looking closely at the ingress egress at that location, and maybe fencing it off, I don't think that a rope is going to do it there. It's, they're just going to step over it, or unhook it and hook it back behind them. The, Mr. Parrish delineated the concern about where is the liquor going to be stored? Similar concern about where are the empty kegs going to be stored? And as we all know, empty kegs smell like stale beer, right? And so, where are those going to be stored? Because there is not a, a storage location of any size outside of, of Pi in the Sky. Those are my comments. I also heard about this on Friday of last week, so apologies if I'm ill-prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Ted Fitzell. I live in Woods Hole, and I think there's an elephant in the room. Dr. Steinbach pointed out there's a, a natural amphitheater across the street from Pi in the Sky. And when they have these, this entertainment, it's filled with people. And now you're going to start serving alcohol. It's already very dangerous where they walk between, across the road over to get a cup of coffee. But if you start serving alcohol, I think you're going to have a very serious public safety problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, I'll take one more comment. Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Renshaw. I've lived in Woods Hole for 75 years, and I've been coming to liquor license hearings for the last 30 or 40 years as former president of the Community Association. We tried to express the feeling of the village that we are overwhelmed by the development of the liquor licenses and what, and what they mean to us. And every time there's a new business, they say, "We gotta be, we gotta be equal to the, the other guys because they already have them." I think that's a spurious argument. I think this thing was generated out of a tiny little place, and now it's developed into a very big, very successful thing, and there's absolutely no reason why it can't consider, continue like it is. I think it's very outrageous that they're asking for a liquor license on this thing, and I'm, I'm very, very strongly opposed to it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Would you close, Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The applicant requests that this hearing be continued to a later date, just so that we can discuss with ownership the suggestions that Mr. Mascali had made as far as potentially serving beer and wine as opposed to full liquor, and potentially reducing the operating hours from what is being sought.
But we could modify that tonight, couldn't we? Condition it if we so chose? I'm not sure why we need to close. I'm, I'm not sure we need to close the hearing because we could modify it.
Well, I'd like to have the opportunity to talk to the owners of the business about it.
Mr. Mascali?
Just, just to clarify, I didn't suggest it. I just asked if you would consider it, so.
Well, we, we would consider it, and I think that the owners of the business deserve the opportunity to, to consider that as well.
Mr. Johnson's job?
Sure. So, in, in response to your question, Madam Chair, the, the board could make a decision based on what's in front of you this evening. The board could choose to continue the hearing as requested by the applicant, so they can speak to the owners and come back with a specific proposal that would be acceptable to them. So the board is not obligated to continue the hearing.
And if I may, Madam Chair, these comments that we've received from the public, they were emailed to us today at 5:10 p.m. by the Select Board's office, so we haven't had much time to react to it either as well. And I think the owners of the business would like to at least go through it and be able to address the concerns the community has.
What is, oh, Mr. Zalinski?
I have a question. That'll piggyback off what you just said. In your earlier testimony, you said that while there was time, you haven't reached out to the community prior to this. How long has this been in the works?
This has been in the works for a few months. We submitted the application, I believe, for the first time in February.
So there was no time to reach out to, Woods Hole's small.
Well, we didn't, we didn't receive formal comments from the town. So now we have those in writing. We received them less than an hour before this meeting started. I think the owners of the business would like to review them and, you know, would like to understand what the concerns are, being out of state.
That was your obligation to do that, not, not them to come knock on your door to find out what you were doing.
Well, yeah, of course.
Just to be clear, you know, we've been talking about this on, uh, for a few months. We'd mentioned to a number of folks just casually that we were going to think about pursuing it and sort of feel the waters, and we've been navigating the application process since then. But, you know, that's, I think, why we're going to try to possibly continue, to give us a little more time, because as Anthony mentioned, we just got the comments. I hadn't heard anything, and I'm there every day, about any opposition until, you know, and I understand where everybody's coming from. You know, we don't want this to be a bad thing, so.
So, I, I'll finish up with this. While each board member has their own way of looking at this, you have to ask yourself when you go back to your ownership, is it a positive influence on the community? And I see with the density, the safety issues, logistical issues, and the previous disregard for the requirements that all the other businesses had to abide by during that tough time that you described, that it's, it's going to be an uphill battle to get my support on this, just so you know.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Anything else from the board?
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Scott Price.
Sorry, I, I recognize it's difficult for me to jump in. So I'm wondering, obviously, anyone who plans to purchase and drink alcohol needs to be 21. So does that mean it's on the, the cashiers who are inside to check ID? Or does it mean that ID's going to be checked as people go through the rope? And, and does that mean that people who are not 21 would not be able to go in and purchase food and leave? I'm just wondering the logistics of that.
Logistically, there'll be a designated bartender. You'll have to present ID to that designated bartender. And, and the evenings that we have a crowd, we're going to have one staff person at the, at the front, choke point, and another staff person at the back choke point checking IDs. I take this very seriously. It's definitely a double-edged sword, but I wouldn't be here if I didn't think we could do this successfully to the benefit of the community. But I do believe it is, we have to handle it very carefully.
Did you have another question, Ms. Scott Price?
I, so, I just to further clarify, so if someone is checking IDs at the front and the back on a night that you have a crowd, if someone such as, you know, 20-year-old who normally comes to open mic night or something, goes in and wants to just buy a coffee, they would, so they would have their ID checked at the front, somehow inform the staff that they're not 21, but then get to the bar and they have their ID checked a second time?
Or something like a stamp or a wristband system could be enacted.
So if someone comes to the front, they're over 21, they get a wristband, they can go inside, and then the bartender knows they can purchase alcohol? Is that what you're saying?
That's something I've seen work in the past, and something we talked, talked about using as one of the tools to control the situation.
Okay, but that's, that's not confirmed yet. That's just an idea that you have, correct?
Well, we're gonna, we, we fully intend to do one of the two. We've got to make sure that we know who's of age.
Thank you.
Mr. Mascali?
Yeah, I mean, clearly, safety and, and people going across the street with liquor is a, is a big concern. I'm, I'm also concerned about the rear access, and I think that's even more of a problem. And again, not a, not a suggestion, but if, if it is continued, you know, is there a consideration to not allowing, somehow blocking off the rear to prevent anyone, because it's a little...
That's where the bouncer would come in, or the door person. Bouncer, I think, is a bit of a harsh word. We don't really see a situation where we're going to have, you know...
Anything else from the board?
I would say that we, we should ask where the liquor is going. That's a good point that one of the residents made, and also the storage of the...
So the whole facility is fully cameras. We have cameras all over the place, under lock and key, either in the office or in a lock cage in the refrigerator. It's all going to come up. Yeah, and we're also not going to do kegs or anything like that to respond to the banks. You know, we're going to start this small. It's all going to be individual bottles, individual single servings, really. I want tight control on this. I want every bottle accounted for.
Mr. Mascali?
Is there a capacity limit as, as far as your establishment? Just 49?
Forty-nine, yeah.
So, inside, outside, no more than 49 people?
That's right. I believe that's 49.
We have a seating chart that's on the plan right here. As you can see, there's, uh, 13 seats indoor, there's 50...
So everybody's going to have to be seated when they get a drink? There's no standing around, milling around the bar?
There's not going to be a bar, yeah. There's not going to be a place where people, there won't be any milling about, exactly. That's, that's to your point.
But it sort of begs the question, because I've been there when the, when it moves over, when the kids move over to the, the, um, that... when the kids move over to the, the, that, yeah, across the street. There's a really nice place to sit and hang out. I, I have to be honest, I've gone over the, the application, and I've thought about this a lot. I don't think there's a compelling reason to issue an alcohol license to Pie in the Sky. I'm certainly willing to, you know, leave the hearing, but I, this is a hard one. There, to me, there is no compelling reason to add another liquor license to Woods Hole. I went back and I, you know, again, looked at what's available and is there some community need? And I'm, I'm not seeing it. I'm not convinced.
I have, I have the same, same concerns, but I think that we could let the applicant see, you know, just think about some of the things that have been raised and, and continue it, that would be...
I would agree it would, would be fair to allow them to come back with a more refined plan and give us what they think is the most minimal impact to the community that they could present.
So, so the, if I'm hearing you correctly, you would, you may consider that a beer and wine license would be appropriate? If, if they were willing to take all alcohol off and put beer in? But to me, it...
I mean, I still have a lot of concerns about the traffic and the, you know, where it is exactly and that impact. But I think we, you know, owe it to a, you know, a good community partner up to this time, from what I can tell, to at least go back, think about it, and come back to us again.
So is that sort of the pleasure of the board, to continue the hearing?
I don't know if it was taking a vote right now. I don't think, I think there's too many things that, it's, it'll be a brand-new presentation. If, if you take every one of the concerns that we've all discussed and come back, it won't be an amended application. It'll be all brand-new. It would have to be. There's so much to add to this. I don't think there's any amending this application to that extent. That's my feeling.
I hear what you're saying. So let's, let's, does someone want to make a motion to continue the hearing?
I would move that we continue it and give the opportunity for the applicant to come back in, what, thirty days or so?
Thirty days is plenty of time.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a, a motion and a second to continue the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call.
Mascali, aye.
I, Brown, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott, Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, no.
Zalinski, aye.
Okay, so the, the motion passes three to two, and we will see you back in thirty days.
Great, thank you for your time, everybody.
Okay, let's move on. We're going to move into our second public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
You have to give a date, don't you?
We do, we do need to stay the date certain.
Please.
Uh, May sixth is our next scheduled Select Board meeting.
Could we, do we have to do it on May sixth? Can we do it on the next meeting?
May twenty-second.
Okay. So we will revisit this on May twenty-second.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
May twenty.
May twentieth.
May twentieth?
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move into our second public hearing. Application for... Yeah, these are loud. Application for an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Kim, King Kraken, Inc., doing business as Romeo's, seventy-five Davis Straits in Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw, and then I will look to the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant completed the attached application for a new license, all-alcoholic beverages restaurant. First, the building commissioners reviewed the application and approved the floor plan and have stipulated that there is to be no outdoor seating approved. The police department has reviewed the application and had no concerns or objections. Fire rescue department has also reviewed the application and stated no objections to its approval. The health department has reviewed the app, location and has stated that the approval of the application is pending. The issuance of a food service establishment permit.
Thank you. Okay, are you representing? Oh, yes, please read the notice. Sorry.
Notice is here by giving under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws as amended that King Kraken, Inc., doing business as Romeo's, has applied for an all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license to be exercised at seventy-five Davis Straits, Falmouth, Mass. A hearing on the above application will be held at the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall on Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four, at six forty-five PM. Comments may be sent to the sele, uh, to Select Board at falmouthma.gov. Per order of the Select Board, Nancy R. Taylor, Edmund P. Zalinski, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, Robert P. Mascali.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tommy Pontala. I'm the applicant. Uh, I'm also the manager-owner of King Kraken and Romeo's. Uh, I have brought my parents in support. Uh, they've been very helpful in the renovation and beginning of the restaurant's opening. I also have submitted to you, I have two letters of reference. Uh, one comes from a Falmouth resident, a longtime resident. Uh, one is also from my landlord, who is also a, um, uh, commercial, um, real estate owner of many properties in Falmouth. He's, uh, coincidentally also two of the abutters on the list. So, uh, he wrote in great deal of support and chose me instead of other people when it was, uh, available, um, to sign a lease. Um, just wanted to give you a little introduction. Um, I have been in the restaurant industry for over twenty years. I have a lot of experience. I have been, um, a chef-manager of multiple restaurants in the last fifteen years as a leader. In the last six years, I've worked for Koji Restaurant Group, which is one of the premier places, um, groups in Boston. They have some of the very successful, um, well-operated establishments. Uh, I've operated in every aspect of the restaurant industry. Um, I myself am tip-certified. Uh, I've been, um, to as well source employees, also tip-certified for the liquor portion. Uh, with that, I gave you an example of the most up-to-date food menu and just kind of a brief cocktail list as well. So you can kind of gauge, um, the direction that we want to go with Romeo's. Uh, Romeo's is going to be a modern American restaurant, upscale, focusing on social dining. The menu will have a lot of small shareable plates, uh, as well as some large formats built to be shared amongst the table. So if you see the large, it's, uh, you know, for two to four people. And then as you come in, everybody kind of has a couple of plates. But really, um, looking to build a fun, upbeat atmosphere with a upscale menu designation, craft cocktails, a extensive wine list, and just some local craft beers. We do not have, uh, draft lines any longer. If you remember, the property was the old Sea Salt. Uh, it was left abandoned, and that's why we were able to come in and kind of take...
Thank you. I was wondering where it was. I went looking for it.
That's where it was, yeah.
Questions from the board? You all had an opportunity to review the application. Any questions?
Not really. I'm familiar with the site because I used to dine at the old restaurant. It looks like the same setup.
It's, uh, you know, we've done some cosmetic, um, put in a new bar, uh, kind of made it more operational. We installed a new cooler, um, uh, took out a little bit of space so that the employees have a safer exit as far as, you know, in an emergency or, um, just bringing stuff to and fro. Um, you know, we still have the same emergency egress, but, um, we also, you know, a nice fresh coat of paint and some, uh, new modern art to kind of enhance the experience.
I think it looks good. I don't see anything to, to question.
I didn't see...
No problem.
I do as well.
I would move approval.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion. You, public comment?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. And we haven't closed the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye?
Yep, Scott Price, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously to close the hearing. Any discussion? We do have a motion. Do you want to?
I would remake the motion to approve as presented.
Second, Mr. Brown's remake of the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Zalinski, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye?
Scott Price, aye.
Great, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move into our third public hearing. Application from Scott Tyneal for recertification of the Division of Marine Fisheries, DMF, dives at a land-based upweller site in Rans Canal, floating bags with Rans Canal and a five-point-nine acre site in McGansett Harbor for a shellfish aquaculture permit. I will go to, um, Mr. Zalinski to read the notice, Mr. Renshaw, and then I will get to the applicant.
The Select Board will hold a public hearing under MGL one thirty and fifty-seven on application of Scott A. Tyrell, P.O. Box four, North Falmouth, Mass. oh-two-five-five-six, for the approval of the recertification of a Division of Marine Fisheries, DMF, dives at the land-based upweller site in Rans Canal, floating bags within Rans Canal and a five-point-nine acre site in McGansett Harbor. The application was received on March fifth, twenty twenty-four, in the office of the Select Board. Said hearing will be held on Monday, April first, twenty twenty-four, at six forty-five PM. The Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, located at fifty-nine Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. A copy of this application is on file in the office of the Select Board, Licensing Board. Nancy Taylor, Chair, Edmund P. Zalinski, Vice Chair, Douglas C. Brown, Angelae Scott Price, Robert P. Mascali.
Thank you. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have some overview, summary history, and I'll keep the comments short. Uh, back on May twenty-fifth of two thousand sixteen, the Select Board approved a Division of Marine Fisheries survey of the five-point-nine acre site in McGansett Harbor. Following this approval, the town sent a letter to DMF, Division of Marine Fisheries, and on September thirteenth of two thousand sixteen, the town received a letter of approval from DMF. Uh, in November of two thousand twenty, the Conservation Commission issued its orders of conditions and subsequently, in a butter, raised a concern of the project. On March twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two, the Mass DEP, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Programs, approved the project and superseding order of conditions were issued. And the applicant is now awaiting Army Corps of Engineer review and approval after recertification of the dive site results is obtained. Regarding the smaller upweller site in Rans Canal in two thousand seventeen, the board gave conceptual approval to the Division of Marine Fisheries survey of the nine-thousand-square-foot site at Bay, Bay Road. And again, November two thousand twenty, the Conservation Commission issued its orders of conditions, and a butter raised a concern subsequently. And on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, the applicant received approval from the Mass DEP, and a set of superseding orders of conditions was again issued. And the applicant now awaits recertification through the Select Board of the DMF site, dive site survey, and Army Corps of Engineer approval.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Hi, welcome.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. So I'm Alex Tyneal. This is my father's. Uh, if it's all right, I'd be representing the both of us here. But, yeah, we're just trying to get our final certification done so we can get our Army Corps. We've already submitted the application. They're just awaiting these dive results, at which point we should have all of the required signatures to formally apply for, uh, an actual aquaculture license beyond just the conditional approval.
Questions from the board?
I guess I probably have a silly question. When I first read this, I thought there was a typo. Waited for recertification of the Division of Marine Fisheries dives at a land-based upweller? How do you dive at a land-based upweller?
They, they won't be actually diving at the upweller, but where the upweller is situated, it does draw water from Rans Canal where the floating bags will be. So they'll be investigating that area where the water will be taken from.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Have you, if I could, uh...
Yes.
Have you been already in business over there? I thought, I thought you were already started, don't?
No.
We started, but we've been waiting to finish the application process.
Yeah, we started the application process in two thousand sixteen, but because of the abutters, uh, and wanting to formally address all the concerns, we've been waiting this entire time, so.
Wow.
Looking forward to hopefully finalizing this.
Okay.
Any public comment on this application?
Sounds like you work things out with the abutters, huh?
We addressed all the concerns in great detail.
Good.
I, is hearing no public comment, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close, just to close the hearing. All those...
I'm sorry.
All those in favor by, oh, do you want to read? Well, you were not ready yet. Um, all those in favor, uh, by roll call vote, please.
Mascali, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye?
Scott Price, aye.
Okay. The hearing is closed. Discussion amongst the board.
I would move approval.
Uh, you want to read? We do have a motion.
You want to go?
I make a motion to approve the application from Scott A. Tyneal for recertification of the Division of Marine Fisheries dives at a land-based upweller site in Rans Canal, floating bags within Rans Canal. Oops, it just went away.
And a five-point-nine acre...
Five-point-nine acre site in McGansett Harbor for a shellfish aquaculture permit.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? This was a student of mine, I'm just saying.
And a schoolmate of ours.
It's just really scary that he's that old. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Mascali, aye.
Mascali, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye?
Scott Price, aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Good luck. Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to move into business. Approve a request from Pure Sky Energy for a letter of support for solar ray projects at the Cape Cod Country Club. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe the applicant has a presentation, so I don't really have any other comments. Uh, the materials are in your packet, and we'll just wait for the applicant to load the presentation.
Okay, we've only slated five minutes for this. I did, was not aware that there was an application.
Sure, pardon.
I mean, presentation.
We'll be very brief. It's really more in the nature of, um, bringing the board up to speed, uh, in particular for those members of the board who may not have been present at our prior presentations. For the record, I'm Matt Terry from the law firm of Amen and Clower. This evening is Manjore Vahora, who's Development Associate at Pure Sky Energy, who is the applicant, the proponent. Will be applying to the Cape Cod Commission. That's what brings us in front of you this evening to see if the board is willing to agree to sign a letter of support to the Cape Cod Commission for our project. The, the brief overview, we've been working on this project for over four years and have been before, um, any number of public boards in the town of Falmouth. As part of that process, there's been a ton of outreach. We've been before the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Energy Committee. We've been before the Board of Selectmen a couple of different instances, and we've also been before Town Meeting. Uh, we, um, received the approval of Town Meeting for two zoning warrant articles back in two thousand twenty-one. One to expand the solar overlay district to include the Cape Cod Country Club, which is the subject property that we're here to discuss this evening. The other warrant article was to give the Planning Board a little bit more discretion in the zoning overlay bylaw portion of the zoning bylaw. So those warrant articles in 2021 passed overwhelmingly with more than 80% of the Town Meeting member vote. We then were before the Board of Selectmen to enter into a non-binding memorandum of understanding, which were in your packets. The memorandum of understanding is, again, non-binding, an agreement to agree essentially, where Pure Sky, formerly known as AMP Energy, and the town would work together to partner essentially at this property. The current owner no longer wants to operate as a golf course, and so was looking for willing buyers. That's where the applicant stepped in. The memorandum of understanding contemplates that, subject to the rest of our permitting, including going through the Cape Cod Commission review process, that Pure Sky would purchase the property, the golf club, which is around 140 acres, from the current owner, and would donate the property to the town. A portion would be donated to the Board of Selectmen, a portion would be donated to the Conservation Commission, and the property would be subject to a ground lease to be held by Pure Sky for the development of three separate ground-mounted solar array projects. The term of the ground lease to be determined, but the initial term is typically 20 years with options to renew out to as much as 45 years. Throughout that process, the entire time, the town would own the property. It would be receiving rental income. It would also be receiving a payment in lieu of tax income that we would enter into with the town upfront, all of that to be finalized and approved by the town, the Board of Selectmen, and Town Meeting at a later date. We're really beginning the permitting process in earnest, which the first stop is the Cape Cod Commission. We've been working with the staff at the Commission for a few years now, fine tuning our plan, being responsive to their concerns across a number of different subject areas. So we think we've got a really strong application. In addition to soliciting a letter of support from the Board of Selectmen, as part of your package, we've obtained letters from the Kuna Mesut Pond Association, the Lockstead Association, the Energy Committee, the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Board unanimously voted to issue a letter of support. We expect to receive that letter at some time this week, as early potentially as tomorrow. We've had quite a bit of support from those organizations and other abutters throughout this four-year process. There's just been an amazing amount of dialogue back and forth. So we've got strong support from a number of abutters who are either part of the Kuna Mesut Pond or Lockstead Associations or are standalone abutters, including folks who live on Theater Drive, which is at the bottom southern portion of the property in this area here. Some of our strongest supporters will directly abut the project. So again, we're here for a discreet purpose this evening, just with respect to a letter of support to the Cape Cod Commission. We'll be back in the future, once we get through the Commission process, back to the Planning Board for site plan review, and then working with the Board of Selectmen, Town Council, and then ultimately back before Town Meeting to have the donation of the property, the ground lease, the pilot, the decommissioning agreement, all finalized legally agreed to by both sides and approved. So with that, I'll turn it back over for questions.
Any questions from the Board?
I have one, too. Initially, when this was proposed, the AMP Energy representative who was coming around to meeting with the committees met with the Affordable Housing Committee for one, and we were very interested in the short-term goal of using some of the lots that were along the roadway there for potentially affordable or even just for any housing. And I asked that question in the Town Manager's Office, informed me that I think that those are taken out of the current proposal. Is that correct?
The short answer to that good question is that in initial outreach, the Kuna Mesut Pond Association in particular was interested in the applicant pursuing the possibility of affordable housing, if it could be incorporated into the project design. That was sort of the only public advocacy around that concept. When we went before the Planning Board prior to Town Meeting to get their endorsement of the warrant articles, the majority of members of the Planning Board didn't feel that affordable housing was appropriate, at least as part of this project, given the location relative to infrastructure, access to public transportation, being able to be in a walkable location. Having said all of that, too, one piece to keep in mind is that we anticipate that as part of the donation process, the town may be, I can't commit to anything at this stage in the permitting process, but may be in direct control of portions of this property that don't need to be subject to the ground lease. So out of the 140 acres, certainly, as you can see from the size of the arrays, a significant portion, the vast majority, is going to be subject to the ground lease and will be in Pure Sky's sole control for the term of the ground lease. But there may be portions of the property, and we can keep that discussion point in mind in discussions with the Cape Cod Commission, and then when we come back to the town local level to consider affordable housing. Right here, where I'm circling, this is an existing five-bedroom home, which is owned by the owner of the golf course, and this is currently part of the project area. I should, it's part of what will be purchased by Pure Sky if we get to that point. You'll see, it's on the other side. This is the Theater Drive cul-de-sac. So it's on the other side of where the project envelope is going to be. We couldn't make any promises relative to that building because the Cape Cod Commission, for example, may have concerns around stormwater runoff. Kuna Mesut Pond Association has been very concerned around stormwater runoff into Round Pond and Kuna Mesut Pond, but Pure Sky has always been very open to, you know, responding to concerns, being inventive with respect to this project design. This area up here, which is outside of this yellow area, there's an existing four-unit condo, which is not part of the purchase option. The current owner intends to retain those condo units and an adjacent vacant parcel. So that's outside of the scope of our purchase option and therefore our control. But if there are other portions of the property, we're certainly open to discussions down the line as this project plan continues to evolve.
Can we look at approving this while also keeping that discussion alive? I thought that's what the email said. Mr. Johnson, it's John.
Yes, I believe you can, and I would, you know, just like to take the opportunity to, you know, say publicly here to request that we do just that, that we continue the conversation, and I understand there's a complex permitting process that the applicant needs to go through with the Cape Cod Commission, but there may very well be parcels that are currently planned for the solar array on Boxbury Road that might be more suitable for housing than the parcel that's nestled right in between Round Pond and Kuna Mesut Pond. So if we could keep that open for ongoing dialogue, and to be clear, we're a long way from pursuing any affordable housing at this property whatsoever. It's, you know, it's a sensitive area. The Planning Board raised some legitimate, you know, questions about the location, proximity to services and infrastructure. But, you know, I think the town wants to be taking a 20- to 50-year long-term view about what we might want to do with this property in the long term. So without committing to affordable housing, if we could keep that dialogue open and perhaps tweaking the design just a little bit through the Cape Cod Commission process.
That's my point, and I didn't want to hold them up because I think we can keep both things going at the same time. Mr. Zelinski?
I guess there's questions for you. We would certainly require some specificity to the request that we're signing on to for support.
So.
I mean, this wouldn't be a support letter blanket covering anything conceptually down the line that may or may not happen. I mean, we would certainly want to be able to see this thing develop.
That.
And a lot of times, an approval letter is just that. It's an approval letter that, you know, it's a horse is out of the barn, the horse is out of the barn.
This is a letter of support, not a project.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but that happens quite often with support letters from towns.
If I may, there, you know, there is a nuance there, and it's important to bear in mind that the Cape Cod Commission is not the only approval that the applicant requires to see this project through to resolution. They need approvals from the town. So the town has multiple bites at the apple to negotiate with the applicant between now and construction.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Two more things, if I could. I noticed you're building a fence around all the arrays and leaving a six-inch space at the bottom, which made me think, do you really need the fence? Is it really essential? Because there's a lot of deer and coyotes also that have moved through there for many years, and now they're going to be impeded.
Sure. So a couple of points on that. The first is that we've been working with town staff for a couple of years now around designing wildlife corridors so that we can connect existing conservation areas. You'll see that the Conservation Commission owns these lots here. Up above the property is a significant amount of conserved acreage, and then obviously you've got a huge wildlife resource in the Kuna Mesut and Round Pond areas. So we're looking to make sure that all of those areas are connected and remain connected. The fencing is required to maintain site control, security, to be able to protect the array, to make sure that it doesn't become an attractive nuisance. So I've worked with AMP, now Pure Sky Solar, on a half dozen projects around the Commonwealth. The one that's farther down the line than this and is just about to be turned on is on Katuitt Road and Sandwich. It's a smaller project, 18 acres with a 10-acre array, but in that instance, all 10 acres of the array are fenced in so that you don't have any security concerns, you don't have any risk of folks wandering onto the site. So it's standard operating procedure to have the array area itself be secured. In this case, there's a significant environmental benefit to that as well, because even though larger animals are prevented from moving through those areas, the area within the array is, you know, going to be a wildlife pollinator meadow underneath all of this acreage that you see. And it's, you know, only going to be visited internally once or twice a year. So over the potentially 45-year life, there's going to be very little human footprint, array notwithstanding, you know, over the course of from one year to the next. So we're doing as much as we can to try to connect these areas. We've also, as part of our agreement with the Kuna Mesut Pond Association, agreed to install a series of trail networks along Kuna Mesut Pond that connects to existing trail networks and currently conserved acreage so that folks can come down and park at the end of Theater Drive and walk all the way along the Kuna Mesut Pond frontage that will be totally unblocked. So the fencing area is really, as you can see, sort of comes along this way. So this area here is a vernal pool, so the fencing will come up here. The rest of this area will be open to the public, accessible both to wildlife and to visitors as well.
Okay, and one more thing, if I could.
And then I do have somebody from the public that would like to speak, so.
The last thing is, I've learned that when we did the solar field at the landfill, the town negotiated the power purchase agreement with Eversource, and as a result of that, we were granted some discount on all of our town electrical rates, and I understand that that goes on permanently because of that. I don't know all the details, but I would call that. And I wonder, is there another opportunity here to get a similar type of arrangement for the schools, maybe, where they could get a discounted rate because they didn't participate in that?
I could speak to that. So there is an opportunity for the town to receive renewable energy from a renewable energy generator, limited by the amount of energy that we consume. So in other words, for those accounts that are already receiving a benefit from existing ground-mounted solar from EDIC, those are already locked up. We have a total of just under 10 megawatts of energy total, and more than half of that remains that has not been associated with the renewable energy project. So this project is far larger than what the town consumes, not private residences, just the municipal facilities. But there could potentially, I would imagine that the Pure Sky is going to be looking for off-takers, and the town could be one of those potentially.
So that will still be on the table? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a public comment?
Is he done with his presentation?
It's.
Yes.
It's your turn.
Thank you. For the Selectman, Robert Young, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 5, nine years on the golf advisory council, so I'm very familiar with this golf course, has all the golf courses in town, three years as chairman, and I'm a longtime supporter of golf in our community. And before I get into my presentation, I'd like to say, I find it a little contradictory. The gentleman said that the current owner doesn't want to have golf there anymore because I just got an email a few weeks ago that he's encouraging people to join memberships up there, so. "I'm here tonight in opposition to the request from Pure Sky Energy for a letter of support from the Select Board. In October of 2022, the Select Board issued a memorandum of understanding with an amendment," I think some of you were on that board, "to the previous company involved in this project, AMP Energy. Since that memorandum was issued, the solar project was referred by the Planning Board to the Cape Cod Commission. On June 27, 2023, the Planning Board received a request by AMP Energy to withdraw the application without prejudice. The project was lacking electrical information required by the Cape Cod Commission. Since then, there has not been a referral back to the Cape Cod Commission by the Planning Board." Now, a new company, Pure Sky Services, is asking for a different letter from the town, this time for, I call it, as the Selectman said, approval for the project. The previous developer, AMP Energy, was acquired by two other companies and renamed Pure Sky. Giving out memorandums of agreement and now letters of approval for the same project should be examined carefully by our legal department. There needs to be a certainty so that these documents are not conflicting and they are in the best interests of the town. This project should not receive a letter of approval from Selectmen for many reasons. Three of the most glaring are, one, the destruction of a 100-year-old championship golf course that has held United States Golf Association and Massachusetts State Golf Tournament championships; two, the siting of this sixth commercial industrial-sized solar array in one section of our town, East Falmouth. I'll just jump over here. Right now, we have industrial-sized solar array at our former dumps facility in East Falmouth, Thomas Landers Road. Canyon's Market has a commercial-sized facility. Falmouth Ice Arena has a commercial-sized array. Cape Cod Fairgrounds has a huge industrial-sized parking, three different arrays. Steamship Authority recently was approved for another, you could call it an industrial-sized array for their half a mile lot. Now you're going to put a sixth, sixth array in one part of town, East Falmouth, which is not fair to those residents. The extreme degradation that will occur in the nearby neighborhood and its residents who reside in this part of Hatchville, the 44,000 solar panels, their engineer told me that, would be erected, will render homes in this area with a tremendous loss in value. A Lockstead Group and the Kuna Mesut Pond Group are on the other side of the pond. They're not going to be near this. The houses in that Hatchville area are going to be right there. There are other locations in our town for a solar array as described in the planning tool, siting large-scale photovoltaic projects on Cape Cod, which is issued by the Cape Cod Commission. Anybody can go online and read that, and this is not the site for it. Cape Cod Country Club is not one of the sites, and I ask you, please do not let her, issue a letter of approval for this project."
Thank you. Do we? Mr. Fenneren?
Mark Fenneren, Grand Ave. I was glad to hear that there is a part of this contract or proposed contract where they are going to allow for the, and obviously take responsibility for the decommission of these things, decommissioning of these things when the time comes, because they are filled with rare earth materials and heavy metals, which are highly toxic and polluting, especially to the groundwater. But recently in Texas, there's one of these large solar arrays that was damaged by a heavy hailstorm, and with subsequent rainstorms, these things leached these rare earth materials into the ground. And I was just going to suggest that you might want to research that, because if the town is actually, in fact, owner of this property, would it become the town's problem, so to speak, if such an event were to happen here? So I just think it's something that you might want to investigate before you get too deeply into this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Fenneren. Any other comments?
Can I speak to a couple of the points that were raised?
Yes.
Thank you. The, so Pure Sky is AMP Energy. They've rebranded. It's the same management structure, the same president has been there since we started working with them in 2019. So there's been no sort of bait and switch. This isn't a new company. It's a new name. The current owner is going to continue to operate this as a golf course until such time as we're through with our permitting process and Pure Sky has achieved all the approvals it needs to be able to purchase. So the current owner isn't going to stop productive use of this property, but he's indicated that he's not going to continue to operate it as a golf course for the long term. term. So if this project isn't approved, it will become something else. It will not be a golf course. And I know that that's upsetting to certain folks, and that was certainly an opinion that was raised at town meeting. But over eighty-five percent of town meeting members voted to include this acreage in the solar overlay district. So they understood that the, this property's useful life as a golf course is coming to an end, and that as much as it, some folks would like to preserve it as such, it's just not going to continue as a golf course. So if it's not a solar development, it will be housing or some other more intensive use. I'll, I'll let Mr. Vahora speak briefly to the materials that are used. The array itself is completely devoid of hazardous materials. The, it's galvanized steel racking, and then the arrays themselves are lithium-based. Nothing that poses a hazard to the environment in any way, shape, or form. I'll let Mr. Vahora go into just a little bit more detail on that point, but obviously that's something that is going to, would be looked at very closely by the Cape Cod Commission and the town as well. But that's been included in all of our application materials for quite a while.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you all for having us tonight. To speak to the materials for the solar arrays that are used, the solar voltaic panels, they are enclosed in a silicon, silicon material to keep the materials within that are, that could be toxic to the surrounding environment. And for the most part, or not for the most part, but they, they are certified panels before they are in our possession and before they're put up. And it would take, you know, as the gentleman in the public mentioned, you know, a hailstorm that can get pretty severe in Texas and severe damage to crack the panels. And then subsequent rain or other further severe weather to wash out any debris, and then the material within could be exposed. In those cases, not that, I think, I think for the most part, we... I, sorry. Blanking out.
That's all right.
It's, it's a valid concern, but in short, the panels that we procure are certified before they're installed.
Any questions or comments from the board?
That's an interesting concern that I hadn't really considered before, the environmental concern, especially given its location. It's the reason so many people are supportive of this, because they think it's an environmentally smart plan, and it avoids a dense housing product development, which would be likely detrimental to the area. We do have hailstorms here, too, maybe not like Texas, but it could happen.
You certainly had crazy weather, for sure, and it gets, it's getting crazy.
It is.
So that, I agree that that is a concern. What is the pleasure of the board?
Is there more information that we can get on that potential risk and the likely measures that may have been taken to ensure that that won't be a problem?
So from our application materials we're submitting to the commission, and this is consistent with the materials that we've submitted for prior projects, like the one that I fully permitted in Sandwich. And the solar modules themselves are silicon cells packaged in an aluminum frame with a glass front and a mat or glass backing. They are fully sealed and contain no hazardous materials. So the, the only portion of the project that contains anything that would be considered or defined as a hazardous material is within the battery component. So you can see these areas here that are shaded brown on the site plans are the, where the batteries are located, these are within steel container buildings that are on poured concrete. So those are the, out of all of this acreage and all this development, those are the only locations where there'd be anything that would be deemed or defined under any state or federal regulation as a hazardous material.
How would the board like to proceed?
We've been supportive of this project, and town meeting was supportive of it.
Mr. Muscala?
Well, I was just going to say, is there a time requirement? I mean, I mean, it's languished for a while, not languished, but you've been working behind the scenes, getting everything done. Is there any need for us to make a decision tonight?
We're intending to reapply to the Cape Cod Commission. We withdrew our application so that we could continue to work with the professional regulatory staff at the commission on providing more information on the project design. So as was noted by, during public comment, we've been back at that process for about six months or so, which has put us behind schedule to begin with. So our intent is to reapply to the Cape Cod Commission in the next couple of weeks, and we'd like to be able to offer as part of that application package our letters of support.
The town manager would like to make a comment.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a suggestion, and Peter stated this, and I think it's appropriate at this stage. So if the board desires, we can include in this letter of support, asking the Cape Cod Commission to address this concern with regards to the environmental issue that's been-
What I was going to suggest is maybe we could ask Mr. Renshaw to draft a letter in support of the application, highlighting some of the concerns that we've heard here this evening and present it to us at our next meeting in a, in a final form, or in a draft form that we can-
That we could look at.
That we can approve.
I think that makes sense. I have one more public comment.
I'd just like to say, Mark Fenner in Grand Ave. Mr. Terry's information, to the best of my knowledge, is incorrect. These panels, in fact, behind the silicone front, contain numerous rare earth elements. The only one I can, I know where they have a thing called gorillium, which, you know, rhymes with uranium. But there is, and there are hazardous materials inside these things. And I mean, you can check on the instance that happened in Texas, like I said, it was within the last couple of months. But to say that they are inert is, is totally incorrect unless they've changed in the last short period of time. I know there is, they're working on something that's basically a plant-based process that will produce the same thing. But as, as of now, they do contain hazardous materials, and I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that that still remains true. And I certainly think it would warrant checking it out. And also, as I said, if the town owns this property and that were to happen, are we on the hook because we own that land? I think that really should be investigated before we, you know, give this thing the thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a motion?
Yes.
To, to authorize the town manager to draft a letter in support of the application, incorporating some of the concerns that we've heard here this evening with respect to the safety of the materials and so forth.
I'll second Mr. Muscala's motion then, Jim.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Just comment, Mr. Young's comment about, you know, keeping it as a golf course, I think we talked that out at town meeting, and I think the owners were pretty clear that that's not going to happen. So I don't know if we can really force that issue. I appreciate the comments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call.
Luntzky.
Muscala, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're going to move into signed bond anticipation note. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask our finance director to speak in detail to the item, but the purpose of this, obviously, tonight is to request the Select Board to sign off on bond anticipation notes for, to fund two wastewater projects. This is a temporary borrowing item. Ideally, the temporary borrowing would allow for reduction in the interest rates or a combination of borrowing with other items to reduce the overall cost of long-term bonding. Ed?
Thank you. Ed Santio, Finance Director. As you know, we went out for a short-term bond for the projects that Mr. Renshaw mentioned, and the lowest net, net interest cost was three point two nine one percent. That is on the page after the end of the agenda, and that came through this past, last week, and it's a very favorable rate, given today's climate. And what we'd like to do is, when we have a larger borrowing, so we can spread a permanent bond offering, we would incorporate this in when we see that the interest rates are more favorable than they are today.
Questions of either our CFO or Mr. Renshaw?
Yourself explain it to me.
Pretty good rate?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
So Madam Chair, we would ask for a motion to approve and sign the bond anticipation note for wastewater, as was presented tonight, and you have documents for signature.
I'll make that motion to, to support the, the motion by the town manager. I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, by roll call.
Shalinski, aye.
Muscala, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Okay, the motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into discuss water conservation incentives and future water conservation recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have our relatively new water superintendent, Mr. Matt Lanin, has a brief PowerPoint presentation where he's going to go through kind of the current situation with regards to our water usage, and then show some, perhaps some, some ways that we can incentivize water conservation. Matt?
Yes, good evening, everybody, and those in attendance tonight. My name is Matthew Lanin, Falmouth Water Superintendent. Tonight, I want to discuss some water conservation methods and incentives with you. I was going to start with an April Fool's joke, but we have time constraints here, so. Just a little background on the Falmouth Water System. As of twenty, end of 2023, we have a total customer base of twenty-two thousand water counts that produce revenue for the town. Out of the total finished water that was captured, after the completion of the 2023 ASR, our total figure for water that went through metered finished sources was one billion one hundred and two million gallons of water. The 2023 annual statistical report produces a number at the end of the report that equates to fifty-nine gallons per person per day in the town of Falmouth. Presently, we have one demand study to see our future needs for the community. We are waiting on the ten-year federal census before we can get that figure to design future water infrastructure. We also previously had a rate study done, completed in 2023, that put the town of Falmouth in a three-tier system that's locked in. The two primary incentives to this, one is it deters our community from exceeding their tier rate for their water usage, and also it helps improve and assist with the infrastructure for water main improvements in the town. Our existing water restrictions are currently overseen by the Mass Drought Management Task Force, as well as myself and those in the water department. Each month, the task force evaluates multiple variables that guide the drought restrictions. Specifically, the condition, existing conditions are long-range forecasts for rain in previous reporting years that's captured since the turn, since the turn of the century. Existing water restriction policy history, as we all know, in 2022, the town Select Board voted to, voted a water ban implementation guideline. In 2023, the Select Board voted to allow the water superintendent the authority to implement those restrictions as, on a need-by-need basis. And those water restrictions are communicated when they are established, that we go into a restriction through our town websites, police and fire, local newspapers, and signboards. Potential water conservation incentives. Presently, we have four main appliances internally in homes and businesses that could be updated and potentially, in the future, provide a credit to the customers. The number one cause of additional water usage that's charged each revenue customer is toilets that exceed the old outdated five-gallon flush versus the new high efficiencies that have a one-point-two-eight gallon flush. So if you had a family of five, presently with a pre-1980s toilet, you're looking at twenty-five gallons of water for, for, for five people in, in one day versus having a one-point-two-eight. So, you know, washing machines are another one. They have a top loading and a side loading. The top-loading washing machines are great for large families, but for smaller families that don't do, do as much laundry, you're using the same amount of water each time on the top loading as you are on the side loading. So the incentive would be to transition people to the side loading, and you'd be saving water in the long run. Dishwashers, the same thing, they go from about fifteen gallons down to about three and a half for the new updated high-efficiency dishwashers. Showerheads, most people don't prefer them because they don't produce as much flow and pressure, but they do save a lot of water internally. And the average person typically takes about a five-minute shower, uses between ten and twenty-five gallons of water. So it's something to consider in the future. We'd also like to establish providing free diet tablets in town hall and at the DPW for people to put in the top of their toilets. This can determine a leak very quickly and hopefully turn around unnecessary water usage. We would also like to supply rain barrels that attach to the downspouts, and you can do hand-watering around your home. And irrigation sensors, there are two types right now. One is the classic, that if it starts raining and your irrigation is on, it will turn off if they're working. The other ones are web-based and will turn off if it's in the duration of time that's going to rain where you live. Something to consider in the future is evaluating the future installation of irrigation systems in both residential and commercials. So whether we want to enact that a new build cannot have an irrigation system, period, or commercial business. Or alternatively, limiting new builds to only having consistent, uneven restrictions. This also could be implemented by DEP at any point or myself. So water conservation education, I'd like to get that out to our community, and alternative methods than just putting it on their bill every week, every month, every semi-annual, through QR coding, local newspapers, mailed semi-annual and quarterly billing, social media, like Instagram and Twitter, and hyperlinks. So alternative water conservation involvement would be to get our community involved in water conservation methods. And an example would be to have our students and our schools designing a placard that could be created for water conservation boards that go around town to make sure people know that they should conserve water and only use it when they need to. We'd like to start exhibiting this during the Touch the Truck event in April 21st, and having little coloring books and stuff for the children so that they know that they shouldn't just leave their water on, it's, you know, it's a necessity, but use it accordingly. In events like the local farmers' markets. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
I've been asking for us to have a program to incentivize people to do irrigation wells, especially in sewer areas, because they're paying a lot of money for their water, their sewer fees, and also the sewer areas are already heavily impacted and the soil needs to be cleaned. Is there some incentive we could provide to offer some assistance with people to do irrigation wells, or?
The only problem is, is the, the source of that water is coming from our sources, too. So they're actually just taking their, taking our source water and turning it into theirs, but we're not billing it as revenue.
Right.
So in, in a, in a well, I don't know how much they cost, but they aren't cheap. So they're still going to have to pay a lot of money, and if the town were to have an incentive to do that, I don't know if that would be a- to do that, I don't know if that'd be a lot of money to bear on the town.
And so it's a source of revenue that's the concern, is the?
Right now, all the water for someone that has an irrigation system is going past the meter, and we bill them, if they're on town water.
Well, I'm talking, I'm talking about them drilling their own well on their own property.
Correct, but now we're taking away from the source water that we provide to all the, the homes that need potable water to drink.
Well, I guess you are, but it's their well, their water.
But the DEP could come in at any point and say, no more out-to-irrigation wells.
Well, that's why we wanna do these conservation measures, but at the same time, it should seem to be fair to the residents to try to help them with that. It seems like it's a big barrier for people, 'cause, you know, I don't know, between three and ten thousand dollars, I'm, I'm gonna say probably to do a well, and...
I think it would depend on where, the topography of where you're located.
Right.
You know, before you could get that, but...
Any other comments or questions from the board?
No, but I like all the, the other ideas. I just wish we could go a little further with that one.
Well, I think we can keep it, that conversation open, because we can look at other ideas and other incentives. But I think this was a great place to start.
I agree.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on. Approve Community Preservation Committee request for the approval of High Field Hall Phase Two CP Fund application. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maureen Thomas is here, our CPC Coordinator. I'm just gonna really quickly introduce her. She's getting her presentation loaded. High Field Hall received about one-point-one million dollars in CP funds back in April of 2023 through town meeting for an exterior rehab and water abatement rehabilitation project. The total construction cost in '22 was one-point-three-nine million dollars, with High Field Hall providing about four-hundred thousand dollars in match to cover the remaining construction and contract costs. Since 2022, increasing costs brought the total construction cost above the one-and-a-half million dollar threshold, which, as you know, requires an owner's project manager. Additional funds are now needed to fully fund the owner's project manager and an architect to develop design plans, bid documents, as well as provide construction oversight. Madam Chair and Select Board, the project's been delayed due to the above circumstances and will be delayed further or not move forward at all if more funding isn't secure. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to request Select Board approval for the High Field Hall Phase Two CP Fund application for November town meeting. I'll turn it over to Maureen.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking this up this evening, because the applications for November town meeting are due on April tenth. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mike. That was actually the majority of what I was going to say, so I can be super quick. The additional funds required include one-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand to cover increased construction costs, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for increased contractual costs, some of which are being funded through High Field Hall's matching funds. We have built in a thirty-three thousand, five-hundred-dollar contingency for the project for a total CP fund request in this Phase Two of four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, five-hundred dollars. And the construction work that would be completed under this project includes window glazing and weather stripping, roofing, chimney flashing, cladding, gutters and downspouts, fascia and trim, clapboard and sheathing, doors, decking, and painting. So it's a pretty full exterior rehabilitation.
Questions from the board regarding this application?
I think it's a valid request, and it's a community center, and a lot of activities happen there that are town-related. I think I would support it.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Is there a written motion? Yes.
Not a hearing.
I would move approval of the request to fund four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, I think it is?
Four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, five-hundred.
Five hundred. Additional funds for the High Field Hall renovation.
Second, Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Taylor, aye. Motion moves forward unanimously.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Okay, we will go to number five. Approve Wacoit Bay intermunicipal agreement. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be quick about this. The towns of Falmouth, Mashpee, and Sandwich all share the watershed to Wacoit Bay and contribute nitrogen load to the Wacoit Bay watershed. Wacoit Bay is experiencing water quality and other impacts due to excess nitrogen load, loading from human sources, which you all primarily do from septic systems within the three towns. Under contract to Falmouth and Mashpee, the consultant GHD drafted a watershed load allocation approach back in 2020, and it's attached to the IMA intermunicipal agreement. Madam Chair and Select Board, based upon, based on land area, land use, and natural attenuation factors, the report concluded that the average contributions from each of the towns to the attenuated nitrogen load to Wacoit Bay are, Falmouth about fifty percent, Mashpee about forty-four percent, and Sandwich six percent. All three towns declared their intent to apply for watershed permits for their nitrogen-sensitive areas, including Wacoit Bay, under the state's watershed permit regulation 314 CMR 21.00, which, as you all recall, became effective last year. In December of last year, Falmouth submitted notices of intent to file watershed permit applications for all the coastal ponds. The town's NOI schedule stated that Falmouth would file a watershed permit application for Wacoit Bay by January of 2028. For any watershed, the watershed permit regs require that an intermunicipal agreement be executed prior to the application for these watershed permits. This particular IMA accepts the referenced GHD, the consultant's nitrogen load allocation, and provides a framework for cooperation and coordination regarding future watershed planning for Wacoit Bay among the three municipalities. At this point, the IMA does not commit the towns, importantly, to any specific watershed plan or financial outlet. The agreement is flexible and may be modified in the future as more specific plans are made by each of the towns to address their portion of the nitrogen loads of Wacoit Bay. Madam Chair, Amy Lowell, our outstanding wastewater superintendent, is here tonight to answer any specific questions. I just want the board to know that, I wanna thank Amy for participating in, in, I think, all of the meetings. There've been several between the three towns. She did a great job putting this together. She coordinated with town council, who has also reviewed the IMA and approved it as to form. And I would also note that the towns of Mashpee and Sandwich, select boards have already signed their agreements. So we're the last, the last time to sign.
Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions of either the town manager or our wastewater superintendent?
Let's move forward.
Okay, I would, I would accept a motion.
I move approval of the intermunicipal agreement between Falmouth, Sandwich, and Mashpee for the Wacoit Bay nitrogen load allocation intermunicipal agreement between the three towns.
Madam Chair, I'll second Mr. Brown's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye. Okay, moves forward unanimously. Thank you, Amy Lowell, very much. Okay, we're gonna move into the consent agenda, and I will go ahead and, actually, Mr. Brown, would you be willing to read the consent agenda for me?
I would.
Thank you. And if anybody chooses to hold something, please notify me. Otherwise, we'll just, we'll, we will read each item. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I'm scrolling through the IMA to get to the consent agenda. What's the policy? All right, I guess I'll just read that. Consent agenda licenses. Application filed by Seafood Sam's Incorporated, doing business as Seafood Sam's, located at 356 Palmer Avenue, Falmouth, to amend its common victual license and include outdoor picnic tables. Item B, application for a special one-day all-alcohol liquor license, West Falmouth Library, 575 West Falmouth Highway, June Garden Party, Saturday, June fifteenth, 2024, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Item C, application for three one-day, special one-day all-alcohol liquor licenses, Falmouth Theater Guild, High Field Theater, 58 High Field Drive, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, May third, fourth, and fifth, and May tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, 2024. Friday and Saturday, 6:30 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. Item two, under consent agenda is administrative orders. A is request for variance to sign code 184-30 promotional special event and 184-32 off-premise signs. Cape Cod Master Gardener Association, May eleventh through May eighteenth, 2024. Item B, approve a grant of license to the Osbury Project to install educational signage on town property at Gov. Full of Field, 744 Main Street. That's it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, move consent agenda one and two.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Zelinski, aye.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Okay.
Scott Price, aye.
Consent agenda moves unanimously. Okay, we'll move into minutes. Any comments about the minutes of the public session, June fifth, 2023, March eleventh, 2024?
I didn't see anything wrong there.
No.
I would move approval.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the public session meetings. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call, please.
Zelinski, aye.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Town manager's supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quickly, I just wanted to give the board and the community an update. Our town planner just advised me this morning that on April twenty-third, the planning board will be commencing a short-term rental working group. The working group will meet on the fourth Tuesday of every month thereafter until further notice. The meetings are scheduled for 4:30 p.m., which is two hours prior to the planning board's regular meeting time, and will be recorded by FCTV. Also wanted to provide a brief update concerning the disposition of Falmouth Police Department surplus shotguns. In accordance with the town's newly revised policy for the disposal of surplus firearms, my office has posted to the town manager's webpage the fair market value of the twenty-six shotguns determined to beep surplus. As required by the policy, I'm also reporting to the Select Board tonight that the fair market value of these surplus weapons is four-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Madam Chair and Select Board, it's my intention that the twenty-six surplus shotguns that were listed in the February 2024 replacement shotgun vendor invoice as possible trade-ins be destroyed. I'll be recommending that those twenty-six shotguns be destroyed. The police department is currently making arrangements with the Massachusetts State Police Crime Lab Firearms Identification Section, which the facility is located in Maynard, to schedule a complete destruction of all twenty-six surplus shotguns. The state police facility is going to document this complete destruction, and there will be no cost to the town of Falmouth for that destruction.
Nice.
Very good. And that's the end of our report.
Well done, Mr. Renshaw. Okay, we will move on to select board reports.
I attended the Recreation Commission, Recreation Committee meeting last week. There was lively discussion about the possibility of imposing fees for signup for pickleball. There was no conclusion at that point, so that's still an ongoing issue, dealing with signup issues and no shows and so forth. So it's continuing discussion there at the Recreation Committee. That's it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Muscally. Mr. Brown?
I attended the Beach Committee, and according to the superintendent's report, the hiring is going along nicely, and she's in even better shape than she was at this time last year. So it seems like we're on track for a good summer with the beaches. And I did attend the planning board meeting where they discussed the working group. They did offer to serve, and I said I would check back with my board to see if my board supports that. And from reporting here now, I don't know if there's any official action that's needed, but just...
I would support Mr. Brown.
Second?
It's not really up for a moment.
No.
Just wanted to let you know that I volunteered to do that, in case there was any concerns about that. And that's it for me.
I'd put it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's supporting you. Mr. Zelinski?
God has it.
Ms. Scott Price?
Not today.
All right. I'm gonna take a look at moving forward, doing a better job with these times on these business agenda items, because I, sometimes I, I think I'm cutting them too short, and I need to know if someone's doing a presentation or not doing a presentation so I can do a better job assigning the times. Okay, Mr. Muscally, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor by roll call.
Muscally, aye.
Brown, aye.
Taylor, aye. Scott Price, aye. Unanimous, thank you.